Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pull the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp.
Here.
And Counselor Scott is absent this evening.
Thank you. Approval of the council minutes. Are there any changes or questions on the council minutes from January 22nd, January 24th, February 4th, and February 12th? Minute meeting, minutes from their meetings.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second and approved the council minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Consent calendar, any changes or corrections on the consent calendar?
I have a request to remove the final affluent pump station upgrade from the consent calendar.
Okay, we will remove the acquired quotes from the final affluent pump station upgrade, and the rest will remain on the consent calendar, and that will be approved. Unless there was any other questions. I'm going to be reading the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have that coming up in April. We did it last year in April, and it was quite a neat event. We had a really good turnout at the Justice Center. I know Counselor Elliott was at the Justice Center. Chief Stevenson, Dala, is Dala here tonight? She's not here. Okay. Proclamation, whereas the National Child Abuse Prevention Month began in 1983 as part of a presidential proclamation to raise awareness of the alarming rate at which children were being abused and neglected, and whereas this month of awareness has since become an annual event reaffirmed by each succeeding president, and whereas every child deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, and nurturing environment, and whereas child abuse and neglect causes psychological, emotional, and physical harm which can create lifelong problems for victims of abuse, and whereas child abuse and neglect impacts our entire society and our society's future, and whereas parents, families, and communities can help reduce child abuse and neglect by recognizing that prevention starts with each of us, and whereas the city of Lebanon encourages Lebanon businesses and citizens to turn the town blue by showing your support to stop the hurt, display blue ribbons and lights at your home or business, or display blue pinwheels. Pinwheels represent a happy symbol of childhood. During the month of April, as part of the Ribbons Day Lights by Night Campaign to create awareness as the need to prevent child abuse and neglect throughout. Paul Aziz, Mayor, City of Lebanon. And there will be an event on the April 9th? 8th, I believe it is? And it'll be at 5:00. There's going to be a run, and there also is going to be a candlelight vigil out there at the Justice Center. It's going to be a really neat event. We'll have it on our Facebook page and on our website, so if you want more information about that. But I think it's really an important thing that we look at and make sure that we recognize child abuse in our town. Okay, next up, we have the Republic Services Annual Report and Yard Debris Services by Kevin Hines and Julie Jackson.
Okay, well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. So, we do have a couple things that we want to discuss. One was the annual report, like you had mentioned, and the yard debris service, or weekly yard debris service discussion. We did hand a full annual report out, I believe, last week, so hopefully the council had an opportunity to take a look at that. We don't plan on going through the entire report tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We can answer any questions, but we do have a handout on a summary of the annual report that we'll present here tonight. And then again, if you have any questions as we're going through this, don't hesitate to ask. I will let Julie start with the annual report, and then we'll go on to the yard debris discussion following.
So, we just, as we did last year, we just summarized some of the high points for you from 2013. The first page, we think it's always nice for folks to have an idea about how much is actually recycled. And I'll just remind you that these numbers are tallied for Lynn County, so this is all of Lynn County, of which Lebanon is a great part of. But with recycling and composting of yard debris, we were able to recover about 21,000 tons of material last year, which is a really great amount of material. I can tell you that people in other states, aside from Oregon, are quite envious of the work that goes on here and how engaged our citizens are with that. So, the next page, if you look at, we have 6,026 residential customers in Lebanon. I just broke out the recycled tons and the organic tons, and you can see that they're just about even, about 10,500 tons of recycled material and about 10,600 tons of composted or organic material. Our recycling coordinator, educator, made 23 presentations in Lynn County. There were a number in Lebanon. She's currently working with Lebanon High School to become certified as an Oregon Green School, which is quite an honor, and it is a statewide program. And really, that program is for schools to sort of reduce waste and create a culture where kids just do that automatically. So, it's a great program. Kevin could probably talk to you more about safety, but in our company, we talk about safety being number one, always. And it is our job to make sure that citizens in Lebanon are safe when our trucks are on the street, just as our drivers and all of our employees are as well. We answered customer calls locally. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but we don't have a call center, and we don't have an answering machine or a queue, so when you call our office, you're going to get a person who knows where the streets are in Lebanon, understands how we collect material, and that sort of thing, and we think that's a really great thing. Something I want to let you know that actually came up, we got the final notification of just after we finished putting this together, was that we have a new resource on the 16th of March, it will be available, and it's called My Resource. It's an app for your smartphone or any kind of mobile device, and it will allow customers to get into their account, manage their account, request services, change account information. So, if you change your phone number, change your email address, we'll be able to have that information, or you'll be able to manage that information 24/7. And we think that's going to be a really great tool for our customers. And I would tell you that industry-wide, it's really the first of its kind in the nation, so we're really, really excited about this program, and we think that it's going to cut down on customer calls and then allow the customer service representatives to really work in depth with those folks who need to talk to someone. And one of the things this app will do is it will connect you with somebody if you need to actually talk to a person. It'll let you know that you need to talk to a person for it. So, we're really excited about that. Another thing that you may have noticed.
Excuse me. Back on the residential customers that recycle, what percentage of the total customer base that we have in Lebanon that recycle?
70%.
70?
70%.
I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, it's great, and it's a great question. It's a great number, too. Again, when we talk to folks from across the country in our company, they're very envious of that kind of number, because, you know, it's well below 50% across the nation. Oregon's a leader, and we're real proud of that. So, and the other thing, you may all have received phone calls from us this past winter about holiday schedules, or about snow routes, or delays because of snow, and that's a new tool we just began using this fall called a call blast. So, if we have an accurate phone number, we can send a call out, and we can pinpoint it to a neighborhood. So, let's say there's a street repair in a neighborhood, and we discover on Monday morning that our trucks can't get down that street, we can call just those customers who are impacted by that, in that, with the addresses, and let them know that the truck can't get there and when we'll be by to pick it up. So, we're trying really hard and focusing on customer service, and 2013 was really nationwide the year of customer service, and we're trying to really focus on how can we really make life easier for our customers and at the same time do a really good job. So, unless you have other questions, I will move on. Sticking a slide here on the compost cycle and what happens with our yard debris. And it's a pretty simple system, but, you know, it's kind of that thing where it just goes away and wears away, and we don't really think about it. So, it's very simple. Debris picked up at the curb, and it goes into the cart. Truck comes by and gets it, and we take it straight to our compost facility, which is in northern Benton County called Pacific Region Compost. And there, it is ground, and screened, and composted. And so, it's a pretty simple process. It's really just a, you know, just like your backyard compost pile, only in really big piles, and it gets really hot. And so, it's able to kill a lot of bacteria and pathogens and those kinds of things. And we are proud of the work we do at our compost facility. We think it's a great way to recover more material that otherwise would have gone through the landfill, and it's just that simple. I mean, there's not a whole lot more to it than that. And then, if you look at the last sheet, we just talked about the benefits of weekly service, because we know that you had asked us to look into weekly yard debris service. So, it does provide additional capacity for yard debris, and that means that recovery number in the communities where we've gone to weekly service, that amount of organic material has gone up, because we know what happens, especially in the spring and summer. You're mowing your lawn, and the yard debris cart gets full, so then it goes into the garbage cart. So, it's a great way for us to recover more organic material and keep it from just being thrown away. I think one of the biggest benefits is that you don't have to remember which week is yard debris week. That's the hardest thing for me as well, and I know it is for everybody else out there, too. So, it's just more convenient. It's convenient for customers, not only do you not have to remember which week it is, but you get to put it out the week that your cart is full, or the week that it's convenient for you to put out, and you don't have to have somebody put it out while you're on vacation, or all of those things that we do. Some of our customers may be able to downsize their trash container size and save money because they're not putting that material in the trash cart, they're putting it in the yard debris. And then, customer satisfaction, and I just threw that in because weekly yard debris is one of the services that's requested most often. People really would like to have that on a weekly basis, just because there are a lot of times a year where they can fill it up. I know if any of you have roses or hydrangeas right now, I'm filling mine up with that kind of stuff, and in February I was. So, I've got a couple months during the year when I don't fill it up, but even at Christmas time, greenery from the house goes in, so it's pretty convenient service. And we are open to answer any questions that you have about that service as well.
Julie, could you refresh my memory, what the relationship between needing to go to weekly yard debris and being able to introduce composting to the community? There was some correlation. Was there not?
Are you possibly talking about food waste going in?
Yes, that's what we were talking about. Yes, food composting.
So, we looked at, you know, we put food waste into the yard debris in both Salem and Corvallis, and what we've discovered is there's not a lot of food in there. Thankfully, we hope people aren't wasting too much food, and we think there are better ways to do that, but in this particular scenario, because statewide, we're looking at what is acceptable to DEQ in the compost, but I think that in Lebanon, if you went to weekly, we could certainly include any kind of what we call green waste or green feedstocks, and that would be anything that grows, basically. Grains, fruits, vegetables, potato peels, anything from the garden, pumpkins and tomatoes from the garden, all that kind of stuff is perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
What about electronics?
We do collect electronics at our office.
At your office?
At our office, and I don't know if I put the total. Last year, we collected 112 tons of electronics.
Is there any special time of day, or the day that was?
Just when we're open, Monday through Friday, and that is from 8:00 to 5:00. And then, we will collect them at our spring cleanup event.
Yeah, we also have an annual spring cleanup at the Lebanon Transfer Station. You can bring those in. It's the third or fourth week of May every year, so you can bring those in also at that time.
Thank you.
Just a side note, Bob, that the official Oregon E-Cycles is at Mega Foods, the Goodwill chocolate's out there. You can actually take computers and electronics there. That's actually a state sanctioned place to recycle, so not to take any.
No, no, not at all. We're part of E-Cycles as well.
Okay, sure.
Our material goes the same place theirs does, so that's great, and we would love to get that on our, as a link on our website, so people know to take it there, because we weren't aware of that one.
Yeah, E-Cycles, if you go to the E-Cycles webpage from Oregon, you can actually go in and list the different places in your community that has places.
Right, and we've linked E-Cycles to our website. We just didn't specifically, we like to pull out community locations where people can recycle and let people know.
You have the questions?
So, one thing on the weekly yard debris, if that's something you guys are interested in, I mean, we can, you know, we have the carts out there, we have the trucks now available, so that would just be something that would be, you know, if that's something you guys wanted, we could make that happen fairly quickly. I mean, still yet this year, this spring, if you're interested. I think we talked last time, this is probably a real good time to start that program, if it's going to be a new program going from biweekly to weekly, started in the spring, where most people get to benefit right out front. We've seen that our yard debris program used to just be from the spring towards the end of the summer, but it's expanding almost from early spring all the way into Christmas tree season, and, you know, people are cutting up their trees and putting it in there. So, we could certainly do that at any time if you guys are interested.
What's the added cost as a customer?
So, I think that's something you guys had asked last time, so it would be about $2.95 a month per customer if you wanted to go from the biweekly pickup collection to a weekly, a weekly service, add in some of those added materials in with the yard debris.
I think we'd have to really survey the community to see if they think that that's worth it for the few people that may do that.
Absolutely, and again, we can do that.
Yeah, I would support it unless there was an overwhelming sense in the community that, you know, enough is enough, and I, no, I wouldn't, you know, if there was an overwhelming sense of that, I wouldn't support it, but, gosh, I really want it.
I mean, of the services that people ask, Julie had mentioned, that is probably our number one service that people are asking for, you know, how can we get weekly yard debris service?
Yeah, and it would make my husband less cranky sometimes.
You know, I mean, if nothing else, you know, like Julie mentioned, just so you don't, I mean, I look at my neighbors to see what week it is, because I mean, it's really hard, it's hard to remember, so.
And they're looking at us, so we have to get it right. It's not good if you're looking at us.
No, not really.
That's kind of shameful, Kevin.
I know.
I can't believe you just said that.
So, I don't find out if I don't know.
Did you guys send out the refrigerator card this year? Because I couldn't find ours.
We did.
Did you?
Yes, we can certainly send you another one if you didn't get that, though.
And that's one of the things that you'll be able to do with the phone app as well, to request that we send you another one, or get an online version.
Does the phone app have your schedule, like your own schedule of your trash pickup?
It won't. It's not tied to the address, because we have, because different areas have different routes, and you'd need to know what your route was, which we can't.
That'd be cool. Be a nice feature.
It would be. It would be great.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, one thing I want to throw out there is that we might be able to, if you're interested in, we talked about doing some kind of survey, and then we couldn't figure out quite what that looked like or how we could do that, but one of the things is if there were a question or two that you'd like to ask, we might be able to send a call blast and see what kind of response we got in that way.
Walt, do you think that we could do a survey in, or at least a question in our water bill?
I think that's entirely possible. I'll make note of that.
I think that would be an inexpensive way to get some feedback.
Set it up on Survey Monkey.
And then, yeah, maybe we could do a survey that, then go to the website and then.
Link it to the Facebook page.
Or just a survey, so people who don't have Facebook can do the survey.
Right, but I'm just saying, reference it on Facebook a few times, so that people, that maybe they don't notice it on their water bill can still go in and.
Sure, and we can work with you on any, like, frequently asked questions or anything that we've received.
Good.
And, you know, not to push, because we're just making the suggestion, but I do want to sort of reiterate what Kevin said about timing, because I think we're starting to see a buildup of yard debris right now, and it's getting bigger now, and so for folks really to appreciate getting that service, May is kind of an ideal time, I think.
Yeah, I just don't want to see increasing anybody's utilities at all at this point if we don't have to, and if there's not a big interest in it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for citizens to comment items discussed at the earlier work session or any other city business. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding cities' business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating your name, address, and the address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak?
My name is Suzanne Driver, and I am the Director of Volunteer Caregivers, and Deborah Rich, a board member, is attending this meeting with me. Volunteer Caregivers has provided services in the Albany area since 1983, and we started helping seniors 55 and over, providing them with a numerous amount of services, primarily transportation for medical has been a big item. Since 2012, we've been providing transportation for seniors in the Lebanon area, those that were most vulnerable, that could not manage on the current transportation that's available for them, and many of these people are low income. In, or since November, we have provided 118 rides, and 48 of those rides, a volunteer has taken two people for a continuous time for their radiation treatments to Corvallis. And this is nothing new. I mean, a lot of people from this area have to go out of the area, and that's their only way if they don't have family or friends or someone, you know, to transport them. We do all of this with volunteer work, and we also could help them with shopping or getting their medication for other important rides that they need. Like I said before, many of these are low income, so we do not charge for our service. We take donations, and we have two vehicles, or sedans, one in Albany, one here in Lebanon that's parked at the senior center, and we also have a wheelchair accessible van. We would appreciate your consideration to maybe give some funding to our program. We're not asking for a lot, but anything helps. We also welcome anyone that would be interested in or would like to volunteer, and I believe that we've passed out some information on that for you. And we thank you for having us here this evening, and we're open for any questions.
How many years have you been doing this?
Since 1983, 31 years.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last chance. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Number one, Deadly Physical Force Plan presented by Doug Martini, Lynn County District Attorney.
Thank you for putting me. I push it and it works?
Should be read.
Okay. Thank you. In the courtroom, it's just the exact opposite, so. Doug Martini, Lynn County District Attorney, thank you for putting me on the agenda. Just wanted to give a little bit, I'm asking that you approve the Deadly Physical Force Plan submitted by the Deadly Physical Force Committee. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background of what this actually is. Back in 1997, '98, Senate Bill 111 was passed, which required every county to come up with a Deadly Physical Force Plan. Certain people have to serve on the committee. That's all set by statute. The plan was put together back then. It hasn't been updated since then, and so we wanted to get it updated. The plan, the way it's set out, is we have kind of a general statement at the beginning, giving some broad guidelines that are largely determined by statute, and then each individual police department puts in their personnel, their policies with regards to deadly physical force. Those are largely driven by best practices within the profession, and so we needed to update everyone's policies in here. Lebanon's is updated in here, has all of your current policies, and so it's basically an updating thing that we're doing, and so I would urge your approval of this, and I'm happy to field any questions you might have.
Chief, are there any concerns or considerations that you had in this? Because I looked through our policy, and it looked pretty reasonable, other than the fact that we have 13 ways for deadly force, plus another one that says anything else. I mean, there's a lot of ways that an officer is confronted with deadly force, so how do you feel about the policy and the county policy?
It's, I feel good about the policy. I reviewed each agency plus ours, and reviewed and reviewed, so it's well put together, and it's also through Lexa Poll, which is federally gone through as well, so.
And it's a realistic, workable document?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. With no questions, entertain a motion for Resolution Number 2014-6, and we'll have the city attorney read that first.
Resolution Number 2014-6, a resolution of the Lebanon City Council, amending Resolution 2008-9 in approving the updated Deadly Physical Force Plan for Lynn County.
Will move for approval of Resolution Number 2014-6.
Second. It's been, excuse me, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-7. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Number two, Local Government Grant Program, Large Grant for New Shelter and Restroom Facility at River Park. Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is a request for an approval of a resolution for the city to apply for the 2014 local government grant, the large grant cycle. We are proposing to use this as a match to the land and conservation water fund grant that we just applied for, for the restroom and shelter at River Park. These two would offset each other, they're contingent upon each other, and it would fund the entire project should we get both of them. So, that's what we're here to ask for, and I can answer any questions.
I want to ask a general question, just because I always think of this every time one of these comes before us. Who requires this to go have council action to apply for a grant?
I assume that the granting agency does.
Okay, so they're requiring it?
Yes.
Gotcha. And this was money that we had budgeted for the share?
This grant would not use any city money. The money that we set aside during the budget process last year, the $50,000, it had kind of replaced that, because that money obviously is no longer in use. So, this would be, I mean, this would pay for it 100%, not necessarily this grant, but both grants combined.
And the $50,000 we set aside would go where?
It's still there, but I believe they'll probably bring a resolution back with a budget amendment.
To reintroduce it back into?
Yes, it would go back into probably the contingency line as it is right now. That's why we looked at this as an option, to use both of these grants to offset one or the other, as opposed to using city match.
And the sum total of both will complete the project?
That's the plan we have, yep.
If approved.
It'd be a lot of in-kind.
Have it in our hands first.
We've got to have it in our hands first. A lot of it will be done by our maintenance crews, you know, like the utilities, the teardown, and stuff like that, and that's how we've kept the costs low and are able to slide in on these grants. Hopefully, we can get them. Hopefully, we can get them and, and make that a reality.
Much needed.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay, have the city attorney read Resolution Number 2014-7.
Resolution Number 2014-7, a resolution authorizing the City of Lebanon to apply for the 2014 local government grant program, large grant, from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the construction of a restroom and shelter facility at River Park.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2014-7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Number three, local government grant program, small grant for new trail section, and I believe the location was changed on it?
Correct. Yep, this is the small program grant for the ORP, OPRD. We are actually, were approached by Build Lebanon Trails. They have offered to fill out the application, work with us in conjunction of building this project, and would like to apply for, I know what it says on your original resolution. We were looking at Hatter Vine Park. Jason did some quick estimates on what needed to be done out there, and it was way too much for the small government grant, not necessarily the grant itself, but what we have is in terms of match. So the proposal now with us and BLT is to do the Cheetah Lake Connector Trail and pave that, which comes across the foundation property. We would use about 30% SDC funds, and then the rest would be funded by grant and in-kind match. We would do all the upfront work with our crews, the grading and compaction effort, and really all it boils down to is a paving contract to pay for the paving portion of the trails. So they've offered to do that for us, and again, we're requesting a real, a resolution for them to move forward on that. Can I answer any questions with that?
Will the width of that paving be eight or 10 foot?
Um, that's one question I didn't ask, Jason. I would guess at a minimum 10. It may be 12. What's the width on it now? Is it 10?
10.
We'll make it 10.
Is this just for pavement or pavement and construction?
Just one, one and the other. I mean, we will do all the upfront work, all the grading, which is just prep for pavement work, and then they'll come in and pave it.
Well, the only reason I ask the question is it looked like in the new resolution, it says for the pavement construction, and I was just wondering if that was a typo or...
No, that's how it should read.
For the pavement construction, okay.
It sounds a little weird, but that's, that's, you're technically, that's really all we're doing. The trail is actually built. It's just basically, I guess another way to word that would have been surfacing construction, either one or the other.
So we need to amend this resolution to strike Hatter Vine and Mark Slu.
Yeah, and I actually, I, I had to replace it.
Okay, I'll trust you, I just...
No, he doesn't have that right.
I've got it.
There's still an error, there's still the Hatter Vine on Section 1, the last sentence.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay, yeah. And we can do that. We can, we can, we can address that. I apologize for that. We were scrambling to put this together this afternoon, so.
No problem. Any other questions?
No.
Would you like to propose the amendment?
Well, doesn't, we'd get in legal trouble if we start talking before we start voting.
Will the city attorney read the resolution, please?
And this is still going to be eight? I don't have a number on mine. 2014-8.
Eight.
Resolution Number 2014-8, a resolution authorizing the City of Lebanon to apply for the 2014 local government grant program, small grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the pavement construction of the Cheetah Lake Connector Trail.
I move to amend that resolution, striking Hatter Vine Park to Mark Slu and replacing it with Cheetah Lake Park, or Cheetah Lake Trail.
That works second.
That works for me.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the Hatter Vine Park and change Cheetah Lake to that section, on Section 1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes, and now we need a motion to approve the, we actually need a motion to approve the resolution.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-8. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, or the, I'm sorry, the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Number four, the South San Yam Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Request, Beta Seeds, presented by Walt Wendelowski.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for council approval via resolution for the South San Yam Enterprise Zone to enter into an agreement with Beta Seed of Lynn County to extend property tax abatements. Your packet includes information from John Coscone, who's the manager of the South San Yam Enterprise Zone, bless you, and we also have some background information on this request. Understand, although Beta Seed is not located within Lebanon, Lebanon is one of the cosponsors of the South San Yam Enterprise Zone, and as such, must go ahead and pass a supporting resolution, because we are a party to this agreement. Saying that, I want to be sure it's clearly understood, this agreement does not in any way impact our tax revenues, absolutely none.
But it's good for our neighbors and good for the area.
It is good for the region.
And we are good neighbors.
I concur.
Any other questions? Have the city manager read the resolution?
I need the city attorney. No, I don't want that position.
Would you like my job?
Our city attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution Number 2014-9, a resolution approving an extended property tax abate agreement and waiving employment requirement on short-term exemption for investment of at least $25 million in an Oregon enterprise zone, Beta Seed, Inc. Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-9. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Number five, South San Yam Enterprise Tax Abatement Request.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. This is similar to the previous one, but instead applies to ATI Pacific Cast Technologies. Your packet contains the information on a particular agreement, and again, we are a party to this agreement as part of the South San Yam Enterprise Zone. And once again, I want to emphasize, this agreement does not in any way impact city tax revenues.
Seeing none, we'll have the city attorney read our resolution.
Resolution Number 2014-10, a resolution approving an extended property tax abatement agreement and waiving employment requirement on short-term exemption for investment of at least $25 million in an Oregon enterprise zone, ATI Pacific Cast Technologies, Inc.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Number six, the city manager's report.
It was kind of interesting when I put my section of the report together concerning administration. I looked at the one I did for January, and it was like things are going fine, budget's on track, we are doing very well with this, and I should have put a little smiley face on there. Obviously, this time, things are a little bit different in terms of the last month. We're obviously going through a difficult reorganization. We're doing everything we can to still meet our service needs, and we certainly hope that we can continue that in spite of the cuts. Other than that, I think the managers put together, as usual, excellent summary of all their activities. As you can see, things are going on in the city. And with that, I think some of the managers are here this evening, or I might be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions on the manager's report? I really like getting it every month and being able to read what's going on in each department. It really helps us, and I appreciate all your guys' effort in putting that in there so that we can see. It gives us a lot better insight on all the work that everybody's doing.
I like it, too, and it's got to be, it's got to be tedious to, to track all of that information, so I appreciate the effort that, I mean, I, I think I've said this before, I would dread having to come up with some sort of a recap like, like you guys do, and it's, but it is, it is nice from a counselor's perspective, and I think it's nice from the citizen's perspective to, to have some insight as to what all is going on and what a tremendous amount of work there is.
It's really the only way we as counselors have to really have a pinpointed line, line blow of what's happened the past month.
Yeah, I love it.
Yes. As we were to sit down with each individual, and they don't have time for that, neither do we.
Oh, I certainly hope we continue this into the future.
Yes, we will.
That's true. That's true.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, at last night's fancy program we had, it was my privilege to accept for the, the City of Lebanon a document from the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce. Recognizing the City of Lebanon, thanks to all of our partners in parking, your generosity and commitment to the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center is greatly appreciated and highly commended. And this is signed by Shelley Garrett, Executive Director of the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to give this to Linda to take care of.
Is that up on my wall?
We'll hang it up in City Hall. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Okay, any other items from the council?
No, I, I would congratulate our mayor on his award last night and say, I, I believe that was our best DSA banquet that I've been to, and I've been to way too many. But it was, it was very well done, Shelley, and it was, it was very classy at the new event center and, and good job.
Thank you, Tom.
Unfortunately, I had to be out of town, but my wife was in attendance, and she thought it was very well done, Shelley, and to you and staff and to those recipients. I thought they were fantastic names and well-deserving of their awards. Sorry I had to miss.
Yeah, there was a lot of work that went into it by different people, and I know that everybody appreciated it. And the new building that we were in is great. I thought it was really nice to be in there. The only problem was we were sitting the table right next to the band, and I'm telling you, it was a relief when they picked up their stuff and went home.
Like sitting next to the train during a meeting.
Yeah.
It was pretty loud.
Well, it was really interesting to see the progress on the, on the garden. Do they, do you have any sense of when their completion date is, what's their goal for that? I should have asked first when I was talking to her.
No, not at this point. My major concern right now is just to get the hotel going, and I think within the month we'll see a building permit for that.
Good.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I probably talk to more than I normally talk at these meetings, but I want to congratulate the Lebanon High School Girls Basketball Team. They won their first game tonight in the tournament down in Eugene. They face off on Friday with the number-one team in the state, Willamette, and we're all looking for an upset, so. They have three years in a row they've made the state tournament, and three years ago was the first time they ever made the state tournament, so phenomenal.
Good.
Yes.
I'd like to take a moment and thank Walt for rising up. We have a few more days to kick him around in this position.
Yes, good point, Floyd.
But for stepping in and, and taking the job seriously, doing some hard work, and it's appreciated.
Definitely.
You have until Monday morning at 8:00.
Well, and really, all of the managers, I mean, you guys have, this has not been easy on, on everybody involved, so my heart has gone out to a lot of people recently.
We appreciate your working together and coming together for the city, and I know it was difficult, because it's, it's not easy when you're dealing with people's lives, so thank you for all your work you did. On another note, well, similar note, Gary Marks will be starting Monday, and they'll be moving in this weekend, I believe.
Good.
So better be, if not, he's not going to be here, so.
Did they buy a house already?
Yes, I think they're leasing, and then they'll, they'll buy later.
Ah.
Any other items? Okay, last, we have public comments. There's another opportunity if anybody from the public would like to speak.
Well, I wasn't, or I is, and I'm going to make an ass of myself, which is normal for me, but I'm Bill Sullivan, live on Carolina, but all your fun and games with Kit and Allen and all of that, has the city thought anything about going to credit council to see how to take care of your books? Because I sure in hell don't want you touching mine. That's all I got to say.
Okay, I'll be more happy to respond to that. In the last meeting, what, what we discussed, we have a new auditor, and that was who found out some of the problems that we have, and that was one of the opportunities that we had to try and fix things. So now that things are present, and we're creating policies and procedures so that the things that were happening in the past won't happen again. The other thing that council requested is to have some training that is not specific to our budget, but in reading budgets and working with city government-type budgets and getting some professional training on that before the budget, before the budget committee actually goes into session, so.
And Gary has some ideas on simplifying our budget.
Yes.
Which I'm excited to see kind of what he brings to the table to, to make it a more manageable document for the average human being that wants to be involved in knowing what's going on with, with government money.
Well, like I said previous there, when they was trying to scramble money to put in a coffre, to get advertised for one of the city manager, I guess it was, but like I said, I don't mean a hill of beans to nothing, because it's water under the bridge. But like I said, it's been over 30 years ago, but when I run my department, what I spent was in that department. I couldn't rob Peter to pay Paul. If I couldn't afford it, I couldn't do it, the same way it's my house. If I can't afford the sucker, I can't do it.
Absolutely.
But I know the government's government, but anyway, like I said, I'll put my two cents in.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Anybody else from the audience like to speak? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting.